So I'm gonna kick off just briefly. Todd is really very much the star of the show this evening. But I did want to just say a couple of words. I know this has been, at least for me for sure, and even more so for you guys. This presentation's probably been a long time coming for the public, for the roundtable. And I'm super glad that we're here to be able to talk about it. This is very much a work session item. We are still working and we are looking for your feedback and some direction and whatever level of input and all of that, but to be perfectly honest. So I do, you know, this project was a priority, is a priority for this board. It was also a priority for previous board. And I do want to make sure to acknowledge before diving in kind of where we've come from and the difficulty that, you know, increased rates has on our, the impacts that it has on our, all of our customers and broader community. Especially that first round of rates that came and the heightened peak of a global pandemic, just to add insult to injury. And the swiftness, I think it probably felt with which some of that came to be. And we are, you know, we received a lot of feedback from that effort. The town did, the board did, that sitting board. Very much directed us as kind of part of that to make a harder effort, a more explicit effort for some community engagement when it comes to rates and how these directly affect our community. That resulted in the creation of the sewer rate roundtable, of which we have a couple of members here even too, tonight. Which I think was a success. I know staff felt that that was success. I believe that that roundtable felt it was a success and the board too. From that, there was the additional, out of that success, there was the request that we pulled together an additional resident committee and other roundtable for this broader rate study. This one is a much bigger impact or rather a much bigger effort, I would say. Not a singular utility focus, but this is both utilities, water and wastewater, both usage rates. So our daily, you know, usage with our customers as well as our impact fees. So that, those costs that it takes to come to our community to develop. And that group of residents really pulled together our priorities, our values, set, kind of set those values for a rate philosophy development for the town moving forward. And it was based on that, that we pulled together the presentation that was, or the report that was in the packet. Presentation Todd's gonna have for you tonight is really the backbone of that presentation. And kind of with that, I want to probably turn it over and let us dive in. Cause it is, there's a bunch of slides and some of them are repeats you've seen before. But we do want to make sure we have a broader understanding for those that are just turning in, tuning in for the first time this evening. So, great.
Thanks, Megan. Good evening, my name is Todd Christiano with Raptels. As you recall, may I recall, I was in front of you back in June to provide an update on this rate study that we had been hired to conduct for the town. Tonight's presentation is a, our draft results of all the work that staff and stakeholder committee or myself, Raptels, has done. Megan made a good point. This is a heavy slide deck, there's about 60 slides. We'll get through it. So I welcome your questions as we go along. We don't want to leave anything on the table or any questions or confusion behind. So we'll certainly speed up, slow down, whatever you'd like to do. So with that, I'll dive right in. Here's our agenda. We're gonna talk about the goals and objectives real quick, go over that. And we have the main components of the study, the financial plan. Oh, what happened here? The tap fees, the financial, thank you, and cost of service. And most importantly, what we're all waiting for is a typical bill survey. We'll put that at the end, just to build anticipation. So really, a- as you know, that with any sort of financial plan, many communities along the front range are seeing increased costs and whatnot. They have all these things we need to fund, operations capital, need to meet debt service coverage for that debt issue. That's very important to a number of communities, including the town of Wellington. We also want to make sure that we're recovering our costs appropriately. And we're gonna do that through obviously rate revenues, our tap fees and bonds and loans. Now, real quickly, you know, water and wastewater funds are enterprise funds. Meaning they get all the revenues from user fees, not from taxes. So they're self-sustained, in a sense. We followed all the general principles, industry standard principles. And we've got the books here that are kind of the industry standard for setting forth those, those steps and processes and whatnot. So we identified, these are some, our water rate structure pricing objectives that came out of the rate, the stakeholder group. And I've reworded them a little bit differently just for space from what might be in the actual stakeholder report. But obviously, encourage the wise use of water. We want to make sure we have the cost recovery, not only between the customer classes, but also within a class. And there's no subsidies between the customer classes. And the cost recovery within a class means the low volume customers or the high volume, the low peak customers and high peak customers. That's where the rate structure comes in, and that's where the challenge is, and that's what the stakeholders would really help with. Want to maintain revenue stability. Obviously, a lot of communities now, one is, if I were a finance director, I'd want 100% fixed charge, make sure I have my revenue stability. But it's not always practical. So there's that balance with all these other objectives. So we have a few modifications to the existing rate structure we're gonna share with you. And there was another point made at the previous meeting that we want to evaluate a number of structures. Well, we did. I think we had over 25 or something that we looked at and went through. So we turned over a lot of stones. Of course, we could probably turn over a lot more, but we went through quite a few. So the rate study process, four, four, four steps here. We have our tap fees. How do we recover the go-to-cost, or how do we recover a new development proportionate share of cost to have the capacity to serve them? How much revenue do we need to meet our annual expenditures? Is everyone paying their fair share? Meaning is the residential class paying for the residential cost and commercial class paying for commercial cost? I'll get into a little bit of detail what that means and how we get there later on. And the rate design, how can we ensure our rates are fair between the low volume and high volume users while meeting those objectives that we just showed you? Let's talk about tap fees. There are one-time charge to new development. Many communities along the front range have impact fees or system development charges or tap fees. There are just a handful that don't, but it's a common fee that gets assessed in the development. It can be used to pay for some carrying costs on gross-weighted decks. So for example, the town has issued some debt on the treatment plants. There's an interest cost associated with that. Or we can include that interest cost in the impact fee calculation because it's a cost of the project. It's like when you buy a car, it might be $10,000, but if you finance it with an interest rate, it's really gonna cost you more. The impact fee or the tap fee is really based on the value of the facilities, the background facilities. Background facilities are those facilities that benefit everybody. So you might have a, in the water system, you might have a pump station that benefits just a small neighbor or something. That pump station may not be part of the calculation because it really only benefiting one customer. It's not benefiting the entire system. So backbone facilities, we have to look at what's the capacity of those backbone facilities. And with that, we can take A divided by B, give it unit cost. We can multiply a unit cost times the demand for a, the three-quarter inch customer to come up with our fee. And it's a way to balance the, the, the cost distribution of equity between existing customers and new customers. Meaning that if I'm an existing customer, I've been here for a long time. Hey, why should I be paying for that growth in the treatment plant? The new customer should be paying that. Now, there's always some policy decisions on that of how much, you know, growth, maybe pay for growth and whatnot. But that's one thing that the tap fees are designed to do. There's some statutory requirements that we need to meet. There's the statute 292104.5.
I just had a quick question on that with the backbone facilities. Is that looking at the value of the existing or is that also including that $70 million that we're adding in?
So with, with the town of Wellington, there's a couple of different methodologies you can use. You can look historically. If you have a, if you have a system that's got a lot of excess capacity, because back in the day, they really overbuilt the system. That would be the height of the buy-in method, you're buying into the system. Or if you're at the cusp where the town is and you're building a new system, you would look at the incremental or folding. But sometimes there's facilities, backbone facilities that are kind of in between. And so for both the water and wastewater, we kind of use the hybrid methodology, realizing that there's some facilities, there's some capacity left in. And we did have the treatment plants as well. So we've considered both.
Thank you.
Like I mentioned, it needs to be assessed in proportion to impact. There's this kind of rational nexus, meaning what you get is what you pay for. And that you are, if you're a three-quarter inch customer, you get charged the same thing as a three-quarter inch customer discharge over there. There's that, there's that balance. You may not use that to fund repairs, meaning you can't take in the tap fees and start replacing pipe and fixing the tires on the, on the trucks and things. Little nuanced thing that excludes contributed assets when we calculate any sort of assets that were contributed by developers or someone in the past. Or if you get a grant, that's free capital, so we don't want to include that in the. So tap fee summary. The recent tap, the recent expansions have increased the value of the backbone system. Obviously, you're still building some of those facilities and you're taking out debt, there's the interest cost. So there's been an increase in value in the systems. The calculated tap fee tries to align the service provided to the new development with the cost of provided service. That's the whole point of the tap. We, by using the tap fees and the growth that you have, they will fund the facility expansions as well as the interest costs on loans used to fund the facilities. Meaning that you're taking this tap fee revenue, you should be able to fund the debt service and any sort of growth-related capital cost. Now, there might be a year or two where that doesn't happen. Say growth goes away for a year, you gotta get the money somehow, so rates are gonna pay for it. But at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, when you get to the end of the debt, debt period and you get all the users online, that tap fee should have paid for all the expansion of that plant. So we have some slight increases to the water and wastewater tap fees. So here's water. Water numbers here, so on the left-hand side is the customer classification and the meter size, basically. There's, there's no change in the structure here for water. There's this maximum safe and intermittent flow capacity. That's how we just distinguish between a small meter and large meter, making the assumption that a larger meter has a higher capacity requirement. It's got a bigger, bigger diameter pipe, so there's more capacity that's required, hence the larger fee. So the current tap fees are on the fourth column over versus current tap fees. And the calculated tap fees are on the one just to the right of that. So for single family or three-quarter inch meter, we're going from $77.50 to $10,437. So I, my little thing here is blocking the delta on that. Whoops, go back to that. I think it's a delta of $2,900 or something like that. It's nice and, thank you. And of course, as you go through the larger meter sizes, it scales up. Now, there is one change. We haven't changed the total structure, we've just changed how we calculate the multi-family. Currently, the multi-family is the same cost as three-quarter inch single family. Now, we did some basic analysis in time. Well, when you think about a multi-family unit, typically smaller, smaller bathrooms and whatnot. We found that there is a relationship that is not a one-to-one in terms of demand for a multi-family. So we proposed making this, making multi-family 70% value of the three-quarter inch meter. It's really common, I know, up and down the front range here, if you look at those that have multi-family, they have some sort of multiplier. It's obviously something to manage and look at every so often, just to make sure you've got that ratio correct.
Now, the multi-family, that's per unit?
Yes.
Four plaques should be four times six.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for answering that, because I had that highlighted.
Great. Wastewater currently is based off a four-inch line and a six-inch line. And that, that means the sewer line, six-inch diameter, four-inch diameter. That's not a good indication of capacity, that's just a four-inch line. So what we've done is we've adopted the same meter size base that we have for water. But the question might be, well, wait a minute. Water meter size, what's I got to do with wastewater? Well, we're making the assumption that there is a relationship between the amount of water that gets put through a three-quarter inch meter and returns to the sewer. And this is a very common structure. If there's a meter size-based water SDC, typically there's a wastewater bay, wastewater SDC or tap fee rather, that's based off of meter size. There are other ways to do that, but for the sake of simplicity and ease of administration with these changes, we, we subbed with meter size. So it's, it's used commonly around the front range. What's not used commonly is the four-inch and six-inch designation. So we have some changes here as well. We'll go from $9,700 in a four-inch line, which would probably be a residential customer, up to $97.
Forty-two.
Thank you. So sliding, there's not much of an increase on the residential. So those are the tap fees. I'll pause for any questions? Run slide 13 already. All right. So here's a pure utility tap fee survey that we put together. Wellington existing's in the middle there and it, they jump up with the proposed, and that's really because of the water treatment plant. The second from the top here is the most expensive. I've worked the town of Erie and they tend to be the most expensive out of all the surveys. But here's the thing, we're looking at Wellington proposed 2023. We have no idea what these other communities are doing for 2023. And we don't know when these were last updated, nor do we know whether they're using a full tap fee to cover the cost of growth. There might be that balance, hey, we're gonna use some rate revenue to do that. So there's a lot of things to consider in this, and so there's kind of a, you know, ring of salt here. But this is an important survey, just gives you a litmus test, a very high level of, of how you fare with other communities. And, you know, you're obviously, that, that jump up just with changes in development, both recently and how, although interest rates have gone up, housing market is still strong. I imagine all the utilities are gonna want to stay on top of their tap fees and make sure that they are recovering their costs. So let's jump to the financial plan.
I have a question on that previous slide really quick.
Yes.
So it says Wellington existing. So we go from $77.50 in water up to $10,437.
Correct.
The difference in that, is this just the general realization of why we weren't covering existing costs previously? And this brings us to covering those costs? Are we making a lot of money off of the water we're selling? Are we going to have a large amount of access at the end of the year? Is that?
So this is more about the infrastructure cost, not so much about purchasing water rights or anything like that. Unfortunately, I don't know where the $77.50 came from, so that's not the basis for it. But I'd imagine that when this was calculated before, there wasn't a new treatment plant on the horizon with the natural cost. So it's, it's that, it's the change in demand for more three-quarter inch customers, a whole host of things. But one thing I was gonna mention, that's a good question, because, because you're still in a growth mode here and you have a lot of, a lot of balls in the air here. This might need to be evaluated maybe annually, but at a minimum every five years to go back and look at it. And it could change, you know, depending on the cost of the treatment plant, anything else comes online. Rapid growth, huge change in consumption, a lot of things. And because you are kind of in this state of flux now, might be worth just to go back and pencil that out each year. Or at least put an escalator on this, like many communities do, of some sort of construction index of three or five percent, just to stay on top of things and make sure you're not falling behind.
Speaking of that, is there a model that we can utilize to use that going forward? Yeah?
Yes, there's, in terms of what an escalator might be.
Or just a model.
Yes, yes, and part of our, one of our deliverables to the town is our rate model and all that, so you can plug in those numbers. I mean, because they were, even within the six months we were working with numbers, which. All right, financial plan. What amount of money do we need to meet our annual expenditures? So there's a lot of things going through the financial planning. If you think about your own financial planning, you have to consider all the things at, at home, all the expenses and types of things. So here, we look at our rate revenues, we look at other miscellaneous revenues, we look at tap fees and how it's gonna fund growth and whether we need rate revenue to help out sometimes with bond proceeds. We have our operating expenses and changes, are we gonna hire more people in the future? Our repair and replacement capital projects, our growth-weighted capital projects, so on and so forth. All built around this umbrella of meeting your financial policies of reserve targets and debt service coverage. So we've got kind of three areas. We've got our reserve targets, our debt service coverage, and how are we gonna fund our capital projects? So you wanna, how do you balance that and optimize it? And that's, that's the trick. So from that, we get our multi-year financial plan. So this is a little bit of detail, but just to give some context around how we made all these numbers move. We've got our water utility and it'd be the same for wastewater as well. We have an operating fund, but we created two separate funds. Now, we're not creating that in terms of a budget or in terms of the annual report, just to purposes of the rate study. We took all the utility fund, the utility fund excluding the raw water fund, which I believe is separate. Just put that over there and said, we're gonna not deal with that. Your water utility fund, and so we're gonna split this between operating and capital. Now, the operating side houses the rate revenues, the miscellaneous revenue, getting turn-on, turn-offs and that sort of thing. The operations and maintenance expense, any sort of debt service payments, you, existing debt service payments and replace, repair and replacement projects. Because repair and replacement projects are typically funded through rates, they can't be funded through tap fees. So we got this bucket over here. And then we have our, our capital expansion, which is tap fees, our loan proceeds from expansion projects, capital improvement and our debt service and expansion projects. So the whole idea, we want to keep those separate to the extent possible, want them to fund each other. We do know if tap fees go away for a while, you're gonna have to make some money, transfer some money over from the operating fund to this expansion fund. When we talk about rates, we are focusing on the operating fund, all the costs associated with the operating fund. So the capital expansion, we're assuming is kind of self-sufficient unless we need some money in one given year. So we're just setting that aside, delivering our rates. When I talk about the rate increases here, it's about operating expenses and operating revenues or your rate guarantees. Okay. Here's our goal, we want to meet our annual expenses, obviously. We want to build our reserves for this study period. We want to ma- maintain our net income at sufficient levels to meet debt service coverage with and without a tap fee or plant investment fee revenue. Fancy way of saying that we need to have enough revenue that once we subtract off our, our revenue less expenses, divide that by our debt service, we have a ratio that's greater than one. So that's, so it's like when you buy a house, you have the debt-to-income ratio, it's gotta be a certain ratio. This is just the inverse of that, is where we meet that. And so we want to make sure that our income is enough above operating expenses to, to meet debt service coverage. And we also want to maintain rates to meet repair and replacement. You're going through a growth stage right now, so repair and replacement is not a huge component of your capital improvement program, but it will be. So you want to start planning for that now. And the sooner you do that, many communities have failed to do that, they get way behind. And not only do they have increases for other things, but they've gotta really pile it on to get the rate increase for the repair and replacement project. So more of a longer-term look. But we want to minimize the annual revenue adjustment. Doing all that, you gotta balance all those things, you want to minimize the annual revenue adjustment. So we spent a couple of sessions of moving money here and there and looking at this sort of revenue coming in. And so let's look at the six-year operating cash flow. We've got 2022 as a foregone conclusion to your budget, so we've not done anything that you're really looking at 2023 through 2027. So here we go. Here's the operating revenues and expenditures. And you can see the orange line is the revenues. And the green or dark blue is your OEM expense, the light blue is repair and replacement. And the transfers to the capital, capital expansion fund is the purple there. It only happens in one year, so we've got a cash flow deficiency in that year. Now, one thing you're probably looking at, well, wait a minute, Todd, why does that orange line go down from 2022 to 2023? The exact dollar, that escapes me, but I believe that's the, is that the? Is that the article money? I'm drawing, like, I'll come back to it. There was, there was a, there was a dollar amount of general fund transfer.
Yeah.
General, general fund transfer, one time, yeah, that's why it goes down. So the important key thing here is that the orange line, you want that to be above the bars. And you can see in 23 and 24 is below the bars, 25 you're kind of coming out a little bit, but 26 and 27, the orange line's above the bars. When the orange lines below the bars means you're drawing down reserves, you're taking money out of the bank. And when you are, the line is above the bars, you're putting money back in the bank, you're building reserves. That's the whole goal. At the end of the five-year period, we want to have you at a place to where your revenues are meeting your expenses, setting you up for the next five years rather than continuing to deplete your reserves. And you can see that here. We are, the, the dark blue or green bars there are your reserves. You can see they dipped down, 2025 hit a low point, and then they start building back up, staying just above your reserve targets in, in the future years. Okay, let's look at wastewater. Similar, similar situation here. Colors mean a little bit different here. So we've got again our orange line and we've got a couple of years here where we're above and below the orange line. There's a lot of things going on there with our parent replacement orbital. There's the, the two in 20, 24 and 25, the large capital repair and replacement, purple bars there is for the orbital system.
Basin, yeah.
So that was a one time, so that was kind of difficult to maneuver around that. We couldn't smooth that out, it was, that is what it is. But we've drawn down some significant reserves in those two years, but in the 26 and 27, we build up those reserves. So we look at our, our cash flow here, we're really drawing down our reserves by 25 and we're building them back up with that five percent. So we're really setting ourselves up for that next five-year period.
Can you tell me where the target balance is? Is it based on our policy or is that a different?
So the target balance is the orange line there on that second graph, but there is, the current policy is 110% of your debt service.
Okay, it is.
And so we proposed a different.
Okay.
And the reason is, is that we found that as we issued debt, especially for a large project, like those water and wastewater plants, the reserve balance would jump up like this. And so it's kind of a double whammy. Not only may, may you need to re-raise rates to help fund part of this to the extent that tap fees couldn't, you also have a huge jump that you need to meet the reserves for a rate increase to meet the condition reserves. So we proposed a, two reserves that are just kind of trend more consistently. One is 90 days of operation and maintenance expense, which is fairly typical. And there's a whole history behind why 90 days. And then one year's depreciation expense for capital. And the thought on that was, well, each year, your assets through obsolescence and use lose value, just like a car, you have, loses value each year over a certain number of years. And in theory, that represents the amount of money you should be setting aside to repair over time.
Right.
Unfortunately, one year's depreciation expense is just based off the historical costs that are, that have been booked. So it may not even be representative of today's depreciation, but we needed to start somewhere. And so we use those two components to get us to that reserve target.
And so to be clear, the target balance lines that are on these graphs match the proposed?
Yes, they should, yes. Oh, and one thing I didn't point out was, well, what are the, what are the rate increases? Five percent per year for water from 23 to 27, that's five percent per year. And then wastewater, it is the same, five percent per year. And obviously, can't stress enough with the financial plan, and it's even in our executive summary that we should review this annually. We've had a lot of things happening and just through the course of the study, there are a lot of changes that, you know, this is a point in time that we're looking at. Any questions on the financial?
Five percent, is that pretty typical?
Well, I would say it's atypical for the town of Wellington, considering.
Compared to other.
Well, considering that all the things you have going on, that I think five percent is, is great that you're able to do five percent. I, it's typical for other communities that might be more mature or don't have quite a robust growth-related or repair and replacement program. But the fact that we're able to keep this at five, we, I did a good job of balancing the revenues and expenditures to do that. But in an inflationary increase, many utilities like to do smooth and predictable, low, smooth and predictable. And a five percent is lower, smooth and predictable. But considering all the things you have in front of you, it was great that we were able to get to this five percent per year.
So if we did it at a lower than five percent, would that save? So that would directly save residents money if we were able to change that projection at five percent, which is for more mature communities? Say if we were at a three to a four percent, would that save our residents and their monthly water rates?
It may not.
And how does that, so explain, how does it may not?
It's in the cost of service. I'll show you.
Okay.
Great question.
Perfect.
So in terms of mature communities, that, a community with as much going on here, I would expect the rate increases to be higher. Perhaps, I, you know. Yeah, I would just, I would, would expect them to be probably a little bit, a little bit higher than a mature community because they've got more reserves to build on, they've got more, bigger customer base, that sort of thing. So the cost of service is what, so we talked about a five percent revenue adjustment. That's the overall adjustment that we need to get. So if we're taking in a million dollars, we need five percent, that is an additional $50,000 that we need. That doesn't tell us who's gonna pay that. And so that, that gets to your question about whether it's gonna lower the residential rates or not. Because the cost of service slices and bices that cost in your budget appropriately to the different customer classes, so it's possible even with a three percent, that the residential class is still going up by five. Another class might be going down by three. So that's the cost of service, this is the, the black box that people often say, but I'm gonna provide, shed some light on what the black box is. So, so when we look at a cost of service, we have what's called our revenue requirement. That's all of our expenditures, our operating expenditures for the year, the repair and replacement. Existing debt service, you have the operating expenses, any sort of transfers to a general fund, I know you don't have those here. So that's your revenue requirement. And so how are we gonna take those three broad categories? And so how are we going to take those three broad categories and put them in a residential bucket, commercial bucket, and irrigation bucket? How do we do that? Well, we know that there's a relationship between how customers use water, how they place demands on the system, and the costs associated with meeting those different types of demands. So there's the relationship. So we have to find a way to take this revenue requirement and splice it out to these different customer classes based on how they use the system, how they place demands on the system. And what type of customers they have, do they have large customers or small customers in terms of meters size? So real quickly, we've got this big circle here, says ID and assigned cost. We're going to put costs into facility buckets, because all these different facilities are designed to, are all designed to operate the system differently. A true plan is designed to meet maximum day demand, source of supply or reservoir that kind of meets your annual demand. Storage might be fire flow, which is a peak hour demand, and that's all the thing. There's different costs associated with making those facilities work and operate through the system. And through, through that, we can then assign cost to their parameters. Well, is this cost associated with facilities related to meeting average day demand, the peak day demand, cost, customer related cost like meters is a customer related cost. So costs associated with meters would be assigned to a customer cost or a service charge type cost, and that sort of thing. So we get that proportionality. And what we can do here is now that we have our costs that are assigned to kind of this type of demand parameter, average day cost, peak day cost meters, we can associate that with the parameters of the customer class. Each customer class has an average state demand, a customer class peak day demand. They have a number of customers with different meter sizes and they have a number of bills. So we've got our numerator of all those components of costs, we've got our denominator of all those costs. We can then proportionate those costs to the customer classes. What the biggest differentiator is between these different customer classes is really the peak demand costs. As you can imagine, irrigation costs have a very high peak demand in the summertime. Commercial, probably not so much, you know, they probably run pretty consistently through the year. If you look at a Starbucks, you know, their demand is pretty consistent day in and day out. Maybe they have little peaks and valleys during the day, but they probably use about the same amount of water through the year, so they're not placing a huge demand on system. Irrigation customers and residential customers are usually the highest peakers, using my residential. If you look at your bill over the course of twelve months, probably looks something like that. So that's the biggest driver for customer class costs. So even though you might have a three percent revenue adjustment, depending on how those, these cost parameters here are divvied out, you might have an increase to residential.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so let's look at the results. We've got our four classes here, and the customer class, then it says two thousand twenty three cost of service. So what we're saying is the revenue required from rates two thousand twenty three is five million, three hundred and seven thousand dollars, nine hundred, nine hundred and eighty dollars. That's the amount we need to recover with our five percent revenue adjustment. And the numbers above that show, well, here are the class's responsibility for each one of those. Your residential class is by far your biggest class, four point six million dollars, so a significant portion. And you have these other classes, multifamily, irrigation, non-residential, commercial. The next column over is revenue at existing rates. So this is the revenue that we would get on the existing rate structure if we didn't do a rate increase at all. And you can see the deltas there. Wish I could move this out of the way. There we go. So, so the change for residential is just sixty one thousand dollars, very nominal change compared to the other ones. Multifamily is going down quite a bit, and we can talk about, when we get to the rate design portion, I'll, I'll give a little more context around there. Irrigation and non-residential, they're going up one hundred twenty five thousand and two hundred thousand respectively. In the grand scheme of things, when you look at the total revenue of five point three million dollars, a hundred thousand dollars is not a lot. But when you look at commercial, they're a fairly small class. So a hundred thousand dollars is, is a jump. The same thing with irrigation as well. And there's, there's a reason behind that. When I get to the rate structure design, I'll show you, because I'll have the different existing proposed rate structures, I can provide some better context there. So overall, a two hundred and fifty two thousand dollar change, which represents about a five percent overall revenue adjustment. So what we've done is taken the financial plan increase, one number, we've taken the, the cost, put them in different buckets to assign them to classes, and then we prepare the, the new buckets to the old buckets, and this is what we get. Wastewater is a little different here. Again, commercial is the biggest, biggest class. We've got a, a larger change in, in, in residential in terms of dollar wise, percentage wise, not so much. And there's some decreases in commercial and multifamily. So what this is saying is that commercial multifamily in a sense, we're kind of subsidizing residential customers in the past, based on the existing rate structure. Not by much, it's, it's, this is pre even across the classes. So again, five percent revenue adjustment there, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So from each one of these, so when we look at the residential cost, it was two point two one three. The goal is that with our rate structure for residential, we want to recover two point two one three million dollars or two hundred and two thousand eight hundred dollars. That's the goals, we're going to set our, that's our cost service, we have a number of customers in commercial, we have a volume commercially, we want to get our rev, get our volume rates from that. So here are the proposed rate structures that we went through in the stakeholder committee this break. We, I guess we reviewed, I don't know how many, quite a few rate structures, and we, I could review more. So the rate structure pricing objectives, again, just want to point this out, we want to set a pricing signal by looking at, you know, at tier structures, proportionate cost recovery between the classes and within a class, revenue stability, and here are the modifications. So for water, here are the, here's the definition or the components of the rate structure alternatives. Right now, for the existing rate structure is a fixed charge of sixty six dollars, and you have a tier, a three tiered structure, that's the current rate structure for residential and multifamily. Okay, alternative one, the preferred alternative one, and we've stated these alternative one, two, and three in the order of what the stakeholder committee had. So alternative one, a base rate by meter size. So if you have a three quarter inch, it's one charge, it increases by meter size. It has a three gallon, three thousand gallon essential use minimum. Plus, we have included what's called a capital charge in that base charge. And that capital charge is really to signify that we want to set aside some costs for repair and replacement on an annual, on an annual basis. That was something that came out of the, the stakeholder group, and this is common with other communities. So the service charges may be a bunch of different components, I'll get to the detail on that in just a second. So then we have the three tiered increase in block structure. So tier one is the indoor usage, which is included in the minimum, zero to three thousand gallons, no charge, send a service charge. Tier two is kind of a combination of remaining indoor usage and some outdoor usage, and then anything above our above average outdoor use. Alternative two, exact same as alternative one, but instead of a three thousand gallon minimum, we've got a two thousand gallon. So lower service charge essentially. But we've got to get that money somehow, so it's going to have some higher volumes. So again, same concept here, tier one, two, and three. And, yeah, so the same concept is, is alternative. Alternative three was real simple, base charge on meter size with this capital component included in it. No volume allowance and then a uniform volume charge, pretty simple. Pretty common, maybe not so much with residential in the front range area, but very simple rate structure, uniform volume. And I will say that a uniform volume rate can't have a encouraged wise use of water, because it's not so much the rate as it is the total bill that might send that price up. So just because we have a tiered, tiered rate structure, doesn't, it probably makes it more of a pricing signal, but you still get a price signal with, with probably any rate structure just by looking at the total, something to consider. Real quickly, this is called what's a bill distribution here, and there's a lot going on. So on the left hand side, the thousand, that's the number of bills, not number of customers. We're looking at all the bills regardless of customer. And along the X axis is the thousand gallons of usage, so zero or one thousand gallons, two thousand gallons, three thousand gallons, so on and so forth. The Y axis on the right is the cumulative distribution of bills. That's basically telling us, as we increase our usage, what's the percentage of bills, what's the cumulative percentage of bills as we go along? So let's take an example, let's look at seven thousand gallons because of the line there. That's the average usage, but if you follow the line up to that, the line that's curving up asymptotically getting to a hundred, what we're saying there is that eighty five percent of the bills, not customers, use seven thousand gallons or less.
So it's eighty five percent of monthly bills, so if you assume, right, we've got thirty nine hundred accounts times twelve, but there's less, there's fewer residential, this is just residential, so I think it's like thirty five hundred accounts times twelve, that could shoot forty thousand plus bills a year.
Someone could have twelve bills of six thousand gallons, someone could have twelve bills of ten thousand gallons, it, 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 it varies. So what's also interesting about this is the, the distribution that, this is why we're able to kind of denote an indoor and outdoor use component to this tier structure. Because if you look at this, that will make sense, that there's a lot of usage to four thousand gallons or less, because January, February, March, December, and November are probably around four thousand, five thousand gallons, five or six months out of the year. And you see kind of a, a growth in the demand by June or July, I see your highest peak. So that would probably be these, these bills out here, but maybe not everyone, because you have some customers who have a non-cold well. So it just follows a very classic pattern of, of a bill distribution. I bring that up now because it does not follow, the commercial does not follow that at all, that's in these commercial kind of, kind of squirrel. So just want to show the bill distribution, here's how the customers are using water within residential blocks. There we go.
I had a question on the, what's the seven thousand gallons or less every two months, what's the?
Monthly, monthly use.
Is that a typo then?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, I. I was very confused reading that, okay.
Where does that say, oh, yes, that was, okay, I apologize.
Okay, perfect.
That's the worst of it, wasn't it? Good job.
All right, so here's the residential, here's the residential options, I know there's a lot of numbers up there. So on the left is the existing rate structure is sixty six dollars. And then the tier one, zero to fifteen, four fifty six, fifteen to thirty, then over thirty, there's one missing there. But a majority of, because we looked at eighty five percent of bills are seven thousand gallons or less, nobody's getting in the second tier, very few people are getting, so everyone's paying the four fifty six essential and sixty six dollars. And I'll show you in a minute that the kind of fixed charge revenue you're getting right now from existing structure. So when we look at the shift in cost and the cost of service side for water, there wasn't much of a shift for residential. That's because a majority of their bill is the service charge and not so much volume metric revenue. So they were, in a sense, when we switch things around and move our service charges around like we've done here, that shift has caused, there was residential essentially subsidizing the other classes, so it shifted the cost to the other customer class. So that's why residential didn't go up that much compared to the other classes. So for the first one, the first tier, I'm sorry, the first alternative, three quarter inches, forty nine seventy one, about fifteen dollars less than the current one. And we now have a tier structure of eleven seventy, fifteen twenty one, and twenty one sixty four. Todd, why is that so much higher than the four fifty six, five seventy, seven seventy two? Well, first of all, we don't know the basis for how they split out the revenue and cost, what the basis was. We don't know that if, we don't know if this was the old rate structure was a cost of service based one, and that, I mean, that's kind of the challenge, we weren't able to fry the breadcrumbs, right? But by reducing the fixed charge in residential, because again, the majority of the costs, we look at a bill, it's fixed charge related, we've got to recover this fifteen dollars somehow, and it gets shipped to the volume rate, so that's one reason why the volume metric rate's gone up. And if you look at the two gallon, two thousand minimum, the service charge is lower. And the tier two is ten, ten dollars ninety cents, and I mentioned earlier that this one would be a higher rate. I misspoke, it's lower because now we're, we have more volume to recover from the volume rate, because we're only doing the minimum of two thousand gallons, not three thousand. And the third option here is twelve dollars and thirteen cents for all uses. So it's kind of in between all the other rates there. And you can see the service charge is much lower of twenty four dollars and, and seven cents. So we're shifting costs not only to the other customer classes, but we're also shifting costs from the service and volume charge too. So there's a lot going on, a lot going on. Multifamily. Again, they're getting charged sixty six dollars per unit. You have a fourplex, let's say you have a twoplex, that's a hundred and forty two hundred thirty two dollars, hundred thirty two dollars for a fixed charge. So hence the reason why the, the rate, the cost service has gone down, because they were over recovering their costs. So with ours, with the three K minimum and two K minimum, the service charge goes down quite a bit. The challenge is that there's so much usage between like zero and five thousand gallons, there's so much usage there, we still have a higher volume metric charge. There is that, that bill distribution we looked at for residential, it's compressed, right? Instead of seven thousand, it's all the way down to four thousand. So there's a lot of volume in that fixed charge. So that means there's less volume to get from the volume revenue, so higher volume rates. So that's the driver for that. The, the last column there, the last alternative, eleven dollars and ninety one cents, that's for all usage, and it's ten dollars twenty eight cents per unit. A reason that might be lower than the, the residential twelve dollars and thirty one cents or whatever, is that multifamily has lower peaking factors than single family residential. So there's probably other reasons as well, but that might be one, one driver for that. So again, that's how these peaking factors can influence the rates. Okay, any questions so far?
That shouldn't be that way. I didn't hear you.
Oh, that should say, yeah, that should include the capital.
Capital charge, okay.
Let's look at commercial rate structures, alternative one.
Question.
Yeah.
So are the base charges, that charge per unit?
Yes, per unit.
So per unit is paying that base charge plus usage?
Yes, yes, but it's lower than the sixty six dollars. We'll look at that, yes.
Dumb question, but apartments and condos for multifamily, right? Condos are listed in that too?
So we define multifamily for the water utility or for utilities as with multiple units behind a single meter. So it's not always condos, right? So when, when we can at development time, we would like to separately meter all units, but there are going to be specific instances where we can't. And if something is separately metered, that's in the single family, I mean, that's in a separately metered bucket. So this multifamily bucket is picking up only a single meter that is serving more than one unit behind it.
And condos, or most condos, new ones are not, they got their own individual, right?
It really depends on what the building is like, right? If there's units on top of each other, they can't have their own separate services to each other, right? Because you have to work, so if a unit. Townhomes, which can be condo. There is room to get them their own services, so it would basically be treated as a single family.
Okay.
So we're really only talking about apartment style multifamily, when I say that, it's stacked up.
So duplexes wouldn't see that, or a desk?
Typically, that would be, that would look like a single family in terms of the utility, the, the planning might have a difference.
There, there is some, some challenges with nomenclature between the different things that a town considers from the utilities to land use to zoning. Some of those words get kind of interchangeable, but they have very specific meanings in the realm of what you're speaking.
We had a lot of discussions about that.
Yes, definitely not, not a super question at all, very applicable.
Commercial, a little bit easier than residential multifamily. Search, the, the base rate is a service charge on meter size. With a three tiered volume rate structure for alternative one, a seasonal rate structure, meaning the summertime is higher than the wintertime, and then we have it all uniformly.
And these do also include a capital charge.
Yes. So let's look at the bill distribution here. Now, you might say, wait a minute, this kind of looks like the one from residential. But the difference is, when you look at how we spread the gallons on the X axis there, instead of going incremental one, two, three, four, we're going in increments of ten. And so you can. And so you can see that even at a hundred thousand gallons on a bill, one bill. We've got still custom bills that are out there. So if we were to spread this out in zero and, you know, thirty thousand gallons, we'd see a lot of diversity. So basically, there's a lot of diversity of demand within commercial. When we are looking at our tiered rate structure, we're trying to find the best way, how do we, you know, split the baby here? And figure out what those tiers are. And it's, it's, it's proven to be a little bit of a challenge, because whereas with residential, we can split it based on identifying kind of. Here's the outdoor use part, and here's the above-average outdoor use. It's a little more difficult with with commercial. And especially by meter sizes, some customers might be, have little uses that have high peaks on the system. But also with block one, where you might have a customer who's pretty consistent in their demand, but because they're using so much at the highest tier. And so it's about how they use their water, not necessarily how much they use, although that plays a role, it's how the user are. So we, we discussed that and we came up with a a tiered structure though, as one of the alternatives. So again, sixty-six dollars for three-quarter inch scales up as you're larger meter size, all usage four dollars fifty-six cents. Again, residential was carrying a lot of the freight, the existing rate structure, that sixty-six dollars per unit. We have done service charge by meter size here, twenty-four oh seven, with three-quarter inch. And on the first tiered structure, it increases as the block threshold, so zero to twenty-five, twenty-five to one-twenty, then over one-twenty. The goal here was that the zero twenty-five captured, I think, approximately fifty percent of the usage. And the last tier captured about ten percent of the usage. Absent, not knowing anything else about the demand characteristics, because they're just a whole bunch of different types of customers. Really the best that we could, you know, find some good breakpoints. The seasonal.
Question on that one.
Sure.
So when I look at it, and this is one thing that flagged me, and maybe you can speak to details on it. So when I looked at residential compared to the base rate for residential, compared to the base rate for commercial. The recommended structure for base rate for residential was forty-nine seventy-one.
Right.
But for commercial, it's twenty-four oh seven. Now, or is that what you're saying, is their demand on the system is different? Which is why that recommendation for the twenty oh four, the twenty-four oh seven was put into place?
Not quite.
Okay.
The, the, the forty-nine dollars residential service charge includes three thousand gallon volume allowance. And a component of the cost associated with producing the three thousand gallons. So.
Got it.
Yeah, that's, sometimes communities will say, no, we're going to set the sit the single family at twenty-four oh seven. And with a three thousand gallon allowance and just recover that somewhere else, right? There's, but we, we decided not to do that. We said, we've got the service charge and we'll include a small component of cost associated with three thousand gallons. And then rest of our.
Does it come par, though, when you look at adding up what the three thousand gallons, is the adding that into that forty-nine seventy-one? For the first three thousand gallons, does it pretty much come par on the difference in that twenty-four oh seven? For the three thousand gallons? So if you look at it, does it add up to just about as much we just saying? We're giving you the three thousand gallons.
With, with the way that we, the way that I included the cost associated with three thousand gallons in residential. We would expect that, that, that unit rate, you know, used to develop that cost would be similar for this. So if we included three thousand gallons for commercial, the unit rate that I used to develop that cost, I think should be similar. We probably get to somewhere around the forty-nine, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit, so I have to go back and double check. But the way that we costed that out, stated in another way, this getting to a lot of detail. I did not include any peaking related costs in the unit rate I used to develop the three thousand gallons. That would base it to base, because typically, the first three thousand gallons, that's not a sort of peaking demand rate. So I only used average day rate, which is, I think, the same for everybody.
Okay.
About eight dollars, roughly eight dollars and fifty-four cents a gallon for those first three thousand. So significantly lower than any of the other rates.
Yes, that sounds, uh, sounds familiar.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Now, I'll tell you that, these are all common structures, we talked about this. The, the, the commercial class is unique, because you, you don't have a lot of commercial customers with the diversity of demand. Not just on a per bill basis, but on a annual consumption basis. You've got a huge swing and it's, they're a difficult class to rank, right? To, whereas, you know, multifamily or single-family resident and multifamily are much more homogenous. So that's one of the challenges. We, we had, and we were walking through that with the group as well, so.
Just for scale, I just think it's important to to know, I was talking about that, that 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 range goes from, from twelve, fifteen thousand gallons a year. To, to, yeah, five million gallons a year. So.
And I get to.
On users.
On annual use.
On, in an annual use basis of our hundred and twenty commercial customers. Not a lot of, not a broad number of customers for that to spread across either. So I mean, it is, it's extremely, extremely diverse.
And, and, you know, there, there are some exceptions that we got to school, there's some ones that we just know are a little large, but. So in terms of, you know, like I said, these are draft results and that, you know, there's other things that we might need to look at with commercial. So that's, you know, so we're not, you know, there's no silver bullet, and these aren't set in stone.
I, I had a question. Last time we were talking about this, you did mention that it is atypical for a municipality to do tiered commercial rates.
It's atypical when it applies to all commercial rates, and like Fort Collins breaks their tiered rates out by meter size.
Okay.
And so the threshold for ten-inch meters, you know, zero to a billion gallons, and over for three-quarter inch, it's zero to ten thousand or something. So it could be done, but that's one way, that's one step closer of, you know, of allocating the cost recovery. But it's a matter of how many commercial customers you have in each one of those buckets. And if you have one customer in a four-inch bucket, how do you set the tiers on that?
Right.
But it's certainly something that, you know, we could do. We talked about that during the stakeholder meeting. And the goal of showing this here is that, you know, it definitely can be done. But with the swath of types of customers you have, you know. It might want some additional investigation, make the tier structure really dial in.
So it's not that tiered structure is unusual, it's just that an overall blanket tier structure for all commercial is unusual.
Yeah, and we, we didn't get a chance to really look at by meter size there. We were, we were kind of pressed for time there. And it may have helped to look at, because, you know, there are three-quarter inch, one inch, and we've been ready to, to do that with a tier structure, certainly. But we were kind of pressed for time at that time, unfortunately.
It's double work, you'd have to do the same thing for one group.
Yeah, there's something we can start to look at.
Okay.
Irrigation, and this again is in the order of what the signal was making up with, so, yes.
Sorry, I did have one question on the commercial side. I noticed that the your charges, I understand like the, the larger gaps, those make sense. I was just curious why we had a lower rate. So like, as you go up in tiers and residential, the growth is significant. And the growth in the commercial, and I was curious if there was a reason for that.
Let me take you back to you. I, I'd have to look and just walk through that.
Gallons used, but a, a, a larger increase for a few thousand gallons for residential is compared to dollars increase for a hundred thousand gallons. Commercial is a lot bigger now.
It could be the percentage of volume, but you, you're talking about the price, the ratio of prices?
Yeah, so just, like, not, I understand, like, you have a larger tier, that makes sense for the commercial. It's just that when it goes into tier two, obviously, it's much lower than the commercial. But residential's paying, or sorry, tier three, they're paying fifteen twenty-one a gallon. Versus commercial into your three is paying fourteen sixty-three. So I'm just curious why there's that, and if you need to get back to us on that, that's fine. I was just trying to understand why there's a difference there.
It's probably the price ratios we use, not the addition for commercial than what I use for residential, but on the back. Two question. Irrigation, so we've kind of flip-flopped the, the preferred alternatives. Seasonal for irrigation is the alternative one, that's very common. Usually the winter time, usage rate, volume raise. Is not a big deal, because no one, there's no real usage in irrigation in the winter time. The other one is a three-tiered volume rate. Again, we have the similar challenges, even more so with irrigation, just it's, it's all over. And, but actually, there is more, I would say there's probably more tiered irrigation rates than there are commercial rates from what I've seen. Even though the diversity of demand is greater in irrigation, I can't explain it, it's just one of some, and the uniform way. So here's another example of the diversity of demand. This one, we just kept it to zero to thirty, but we could go further out. And it's, like I said, it's just kind of, it's, it's difficult to wrangle the, what's the pattern here? And what are we charging at the first, first tier? So the existing, here's a reason why the irrigation went up so, so much, is that the existing service charge is five dollars. Commercial was paying sixty-one dollars more. Now granted, a majority of the irrigation bill is the volume component, when you get the bill. They're paying three sixty-five, and that's the current rate, whereas block one rate for residential was four dollars fifty-six cents. So we have a winter and summer rate here, seven twenty-three and fourteen forty-seven. I think that's just the two times ratio, and that's typical. You'll notice on the tiered structures, I have a different thresholds, zero to a hundred, hundred to two hundred. And you have even less irrigation customers, so trying to find that sweet spot is difficult. You'll notice the top tier twenty thirteen is higher than commercial, they have higher peaking factors. And we have the fourteen dollars eleven cents per unit on, on irrigation. So, so basically, when we looked at cost of service, we were, there were a couple of things that had changed. We looked at not only the balance of those kind of fixed costs needed to recover, we call those customer costs. Like meters and services and billing and some of that capital charge, and then volume related costs. Before, single-family was paying a huge fixed charge component, very little volume in terms of, when you look at someone's bill. We've kind of shifted that a little bit. Okay, but then we've also shifted costs based on the demand patterns, the classes. So it's a couple of things going on there that has caused things kind of upend, right? So here's, here's a slide that shows the amount of fixed charge revenue you're getting from each of the classes. So currently, you're getting seventy percent of your revenue from the fixed charge. That's high. Sugar coat it, that's pretty hot. I've seen some communities and mountain communities that get higher, because it's, it's transient, they have cyclical nature and makes more sense. So alternative one, and that's with the, if you think back to residential being the biggest class, we're getting the three thousand K minimum. In a fixed charge, four dollars, four nine dollars seventy-one cents, it's still less than sixty, six dollars. So our fixed charge revenue goes down, so it goes from seventy to about fifty percent, we're losing, we lose thirteen percent. Thirty percent of total fixed charge revenue from going from sixty-six dollars to forty-nine dollars. So because residential class is so big, that's a, that's a big chunk, and that's why we need to get the rest of it from the volume charge. So, so on and so forth. The fixed charge revenue on the uniform, alternative three essentially is twenty-four percent. It makes sense, because we're not, there's no minimums and all that good stuff. And we're getting majority from the volume rate. Now, question is, well, one of the items was, well, fixed charge recovery, we want to make sure we're not, we have revenue stability and that we're not out of money if it rains. People talk about the drought and saying, oh, you know, we have the drought, people are going to reduce usage and we're not going to get our revenue. You can see a drought coming a mile away, you can't see a wet summer coming at all. And that's happened to a couple of communities back in two thousand fifteen, even two thousand thirteen during the epic floods. That one, a, a wet July takes away a lot of the revenue. So, but, I mean, that's one month. And with revenue stability, there's a, I think, a misnomer that, well, you won't have revenue stability, you don't have a high fixed charge. That's not the case. There's other ways you can mitigate that, and that is by having a more robust reserve target, which affects the overall revenue adjustment, gets spread throughout the rate structure. So that's something else to consider as well. The fixed charge is a good way to do it, but then you start going against some of your pricing objectives of the essential use affordability. And the wise use of water, you've got a high fixed charge, there's no incentive to conserve. So you have to balance all those things there. So even with the twenty-four percent, that's still a good amount of fixed charge revenue. That's probably on the lower end of what people had back in early two thousands, during the two thousand two drought. Everyone had a very high volumetric amount of revenue and their service charge was in fifteen percent or something. Then they all kind of got burned a little bit, and they slowly upped their service charge around twenty or thirty percent as well. But each community is different, they'll have their different challenges and whatnot. So even with the uniform rate here, twenty-four percent is, is doable. It is a huge change, though, and you'd have to maybe want to reevaluate some of these policies, make sure that you're still safe. And meet your other, your financial goals. Waste water. Really, the, the rate structure, maybe stakeholders maybe kind of come back with three alternatives, it really boils down to one. Because of the residential. Right now, it's a service charge plus a volume rate, or a service charge of three thousand gallon minimum and a volume rate. Volume rates based on average winter consumption. So if you use four thousand gallons in January, February, and March, that's the average of that is four. And that's to get charged each year, each month for the twelve months. But actually, you only get charged one, because three thousand is the minimum. And so that's current. Our proposed structure is a base charge, no volume allowance, so it is what it is. And then a u- uniform volume rate for all billable volume. Residential multifamily stays on the average winter consumption. Commercial is actual water consumption times eighty-five percent return factor. The return factor is simply a way of saying that, you know, we've got this commercial class, we know that probably not all the water they use is going back to the sewer. They might have some irrigation outside, water loss, whatever the case may be. Eighty-five is very typical, we calculated something around that by looking at some of the data. Might be something to evaluate again in the future, make sure that it's coming up. What that does is now you're putting commercial on an equal plane with residential. Because we are assuming that the average winter consumption, that is really what gets returned to the sewer to the waste water plant. With the eighty-five percent, where's, I mean, that's, well, that's really what's getting returned. Whereas before, if you think about a, a restaurant, using average consumption, they can have huge, high water usage in the summertime, which is going back to the plant. So they're only paying average winter consumption. So the only factor thing, the deal, the issue you might want to review is the return factor, just make sure that it's consistent with what you're saying. So real simply, thirty-one dollars, that includes three thousand gallons of usage. And currently, it's ten dollars per thousand gallons for the three thousand. But when we look at the wastewater volume, because the percentage of volume is in that first three thousand gallons. There's not a lot of volume to divide the rest of the revenue over, that's why it's ten dollars two thousand gallons. The base rate now is thirteen ninety-five, and the volume rate's the same for everybody, just how they're getting charged. The question is, well, wait a minute, in a commercial, you know, they might have higher strength, so they might be pretty, you think about brewery, what they put down, the, the drainage and things like that. This eight dollars and two cents is based off of just normal strength, and that's the suspended solids, whatnot, this new.
Typical residential.
Yeah, residential wastewater flow, we all know it's in this waterfall, so. But there are, there are certain types of entities that have much higher strength, even the laundry mat, or maybe even brewery, or car washes and things. We have developed some, some basic rates for recovering costs for that higher strength customers. But we don't currently monitor those, so we've developed some starter rates to, that would be some further evaluation in the future. So this is assuming that all the, all the flow to the plant here is from normal strength, all normal strength and whatnot, and that's, that's fine. So thirteen ninety-five and eight dollars and two cents.
So that was my question that I had on my form here, is who is more taxing when it comes to the cost of processing wastewater? Are you looking at more taxing residents or taxing the system higher than what commercial would be? Or is commercial a higher tax on our system, costs more process than what residential does?
That's a great question. Well.
I would say that the, it, it, it's something that needs to be evaluated more closely. But the reality is the, the by far bulk of the volume. So the majority of all influence that's coming into the plants is coming from residential, is residential strength. There is a burden that is put on the wastewater plant by unusual or non-residential strength, greater than residential strength discharge. That we are looking to be able to recover costs associated with that. There is a, just a, there is a reality of availability of, of data and our ability to monitor. And, and how we can create the charging. and our ability to monitor and, and how we can create the charging capability to even in the billing system, we're still evaluating that capability.
Do smart meters monitor that?
Wastewater flow? Not, not at a residential, I mean, yeah, no.
No, so in general, residential, do commercials run smart meters? Are they on smart meters like residential are?
Yes.
Got it. So, and they doesn't monitor the, the tax on the system, or how much is going in or coming out?
Those, the, your water meter is only metering the water going into the establishment.
Got it. Got it. So nothing monitoring what's coming back out? Is there anywhere to find averages? Does there any studies that have been done?
For, are you talking about concentrations in the load?
Yes.
So the strengths of the load, there, there are for sure, and that's, that's the, they're, at this point, surprisingly, pretty outdated.
Yes, the nice and easy.
As far as academic studies that have been done, or what, we need to pitch a study with WEF or something. Have you been trying to do that?
There are certain communities, certain utilities like Los Angeles, say, uh, east, eastern, uh, eastern municipal utility district, which is basically San Francisco, city of Sacramento, they do have strengths. I'm not sure how current they are, but we did do a, a study or survey of the different strengths of different types of things. And it's car washes, laundry mats, hotels with dining, hotels without dining, restaurants, and that sort of thing. And, you know, they are probably somewhat outdated, but it gives you a relative comparison of strengths to the normal strength. Whether it's the, that's the actual number, it's tough to say.
Would it be a benefit to run something like that to see, maybe we're assuming commercial is taxing our system way more than it actually is? So is there any way to look at it to be where we know this is a fair rate that's being assigned? We know what to do as far as moving forward?
So again, so this rate is looking, is the volume, is a volume based rate only. So it's not, it's, it's assuming a residential strength wastewater load.
Even on commercial?
Yes, even on commercial.
Got it.
There's, there's probably ways to assign a volume upgrade to high strength customers. We just need to know who they are in the system and classify them as such. Other communities in Arizona do that. They have the whole laundry list of the different types of yeah, of customers, and they, their volume rates all vary for wastewater because they have different strength and volume concentrations. So it's, it's done. It's a matter of administrative issues and being able to track that and allowing for variances, and, and there's a whole other things to consider on that, but yeah, it is done.
Got it. I'm just trying to figure out whether college charges more or charges a, an excessive TAP-TE for certain types of commercial businesses. So that's why I was trying to figure out if they had something figured out along those lines, or because while they charged it on both ends, so I was just trying to figure out why there was a difference in kind of comparing the two.
Some communities do charge TAP-TEs considering a higher strength type customer, but it's usually done on an individual basis. So you think about a milk, milk processor.
Right.
That's a lot of stuff going, and that's going to really overload a plant. So you come in for a TAP, you're not going to pay the generic wastewater TAP. You're going to have some discussions with the
Yeah, and, and we, we have means and methods that we utilize now to assess, asking those kinds of questions. We have a questionnaire that goes out to new potential customers, development with a series of questions to identify what kind of waste, what, what's the manufacturing process you're going to be doing? What's the final product you have? How much water are you going to be using? How much is going to go back to the system? How much is leaving? What kind of cleaners are you using? Are you doing any plating? Like, I mean, all kinds of, so that we can get ahead of the game. We're like, oh, you want to smell it on site? Probably not. Um, just throwing that for example.
Got it. No, it's good to have it to know and face kind of what we're looking at possibly moving forward.
Yep.
So the, the part of the presentation you've been waiting for are the typical water and wastewater bill compares. So we've got a couple of different ways we're looking at things here. Provide some context around all, so you've seen the financial plan, you've seen how the cost of the swing, and you've seen the new rates, but how does this all? How does all translate to a bill at the end of the day? So here we go. Typical monthly residential bills of various levels of consumption, meaning the first set of four is existing rates and then the alternatives, and at two thousand gallons, and it includes water and wastewater. The second set is at seven thousand gallons and four thousand gallons of wastewater. And then the summer used fifteen thousand gallons as four thousand gallons of wastewater. Question might be, well, wait, then why are you using four thousand gallons for both the average and the high summer usage? Well, a, an average user might use seven thousand gallons a month, but have been used more in the, in the summertime, but in the wintertime, they still use four. So for the low person, we're using, if it's a two thousand gallon usage, it's very low usage, so we're assuming that two thousand gallons of wastewater as well. So you can see the, the differences in on the two thousand gallons, the alternative one results in the lowest rate. But if you hop over to the fifteen thousand gallons, alternative one, it results in the highest bill. So it's, like I said earlier, there's no silver bullets. Now, how many bills are above fifteen thousand gallons? We have to go back to that chart that I showed you. If we know that eighty-five percent of the bills are seven thousand gallons or less, we got to go all the way up to fifteen, and it's not that many bills, right? It's a very low percentage of bills, but it doesn't mean that people don't have that water usage when you look at your annual consumption. So it's certainly possible that someone can add fifteen thousand gallons for twelve months out of the year. That's certainly possible. So that's the, the balancing act here that we're, we're trying to to have and, and meeting these objectives. And some of them are just competing, and all we can do is try to balance that a little bit. So that's one snapshot of the, of the usage. Here's, we've got three of these graphs, low mean and high user. This is the annual use. So here's a customer. And I just show alternative one, because the results are about the same for all the alternatives. When you look at the when you average out the monthly changes and all that, it, it, the, the change is fairly nominal. So this is a, the first alternative with the fixed charge, the three thousand gallon minimum, low user, annual use of twenty-five thousand gallons. You see up in the upper right-hand corner of that, that box, this is the average monthly bill. I, we took the total annual bill divided by twelve for both the existing and the proposed, and subtracted, saying, hey, you're going to see about a savings of twenty dollars, twenty-one dollars per month. Obviously, individual results may vary, obviously. If you use twenty, you know, you might use zero gallons the whole twelve, eleven months, and then you use twenty-five in one month, which would kick you into that
And just as a reference, the, the numbers that are along the bottom of the slide, that's giving you the volume usage, corresponding volume usage for each month.
Yeah.
Why two, yeah, why two thousands?
Just a selection, for example.
Yeah.
Right, but it, the new one includes three thousand. So you would want to compare to three thousand with the existing rates to get the real diversity in the price.
Oh, I understand. Average user sixty-nine thousand gallons. You can see here that there is, there's quite a bit of difference in the June, July bills and the August bills, and September for that matter. But overall, there's still savings of two dollars thirty-eight cents per month there. So let's look at alternative one for the high user of a hundred and three thousand gallons. A different story here. There is about a twenty-five dollar increase in the per month.
Definitely tons of benefits of using wastewater.
If you can, I think that's what it kind of comes down to, is knowing how to scrape it and if you can scrape it, save water.
So, yeah, those are the high users there. Commercial. This is the diversity of the band we're talking about here. We have a, a mixed use example here. So we took a, a real customer, this is the mixed use of a strip mall type thing. And there's a huge jump in their bills from existing of sixteen twenty-nine to for three thousand ninety-two dollars and then two thousand ninety-six, so a big, about a ninety percent jump. We get to a lower consumption customer, like a restaurant. It's about a thirty-five percent change, or, or the dollar back there, I don't know quite the dollar back between the existing and the first one. And then a coffee shop, it's, the percentage is even larger, so. And and depending on the structure, whether it's tiered or uniform, there's a, a benefit or not a benefit to the customer. So this is one of the challenges that, you know, there's some sharpening of the pencil that we could certainly do to look at commercial. The, the challenge is that the cost of service produced such a, a change because of the way the existing rate structure was kind of, kind of extreme. And so we're, when you factor that in with the annual revenue adjustment, the cost service change in that, how you design the rates, you've got a lot of changes, a lot of balls in the air there, so it makes it challenging to find a perfect sweet spot, right, for commercial. But that's something, you know, we can surely still evaluate as we go forward. So, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Little of an hour.
That's the end, but we have questions now. So that's, that's our draft results. This was certainly a great project, working with stakeholder group was, I really enjoyed that. There were a number of challenges to, or just with the rate structure and with the TAP-TEs, finance and everything like that, so. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of challenges there, but I think we landed in a good spot to start from, so looking where we need to go next.
We would love to feel, yeah, questions and dialogue.
Yeah, real quick, I know you didn't do the multi-family pricing on that. That would really take a big decrease, right? Because most of them would be the real old users, right?
Automatic three dollars a month, for sure.
Right.
Plus more, yeah.
Which I'm grateful for, because of the fact that it makes affordable housing more affordable.
Right.
I think that's my, so my only worry and concern is with, I know mayor, I, I hear that the water usage is a choice, but coming from an aunt of a niece who has disabilities and friends, many friends who have, you know, disabilities in continents is a huge thing among so my family members, some of my friends' family members, sometimes that extra water usage, I would love to say it's a choice, but it's not a choice because you have to continually wash clothes. So that's one of those things where I just want to recognize that I do know some families that have the higher usages. It's not always a choice, and I feel, I feel bad that they're going to see that increase. I ran numbers, had friends that are in accounting, run numbers, and it is, you guys did something very difficult, which is trying to find a balance between all of users. I couldn't find one. Like, there was, I mix it one way and you'd see it drastically increase on one side, or you drop it down another, and it would drastically decrease on the other side. So I'm extremely grateful to everyone that put in the time and effort. This was, I had a chance to read all of the stuff that the Water and Sewer Roundtable went through in the previous months, through all the packets that were sent. There was a lot of conversation. There was a lot of every single member on that board trying their best to figure out how to make it work equitably, I guess is probably the best way to look at that.
Honestly, I really appreciate that you put the slide in about showing that eighty-five percent of customers are approximately seven thousand gallons a year. So it seems like most of our folks are the, right, I'm sorry. So we get but it's nice to know that, you know, eighty-five percent of res- residents, it seems like, are going to have basically the same rate. Obviously, they'll see an increase in the summertime, maybe a decrease in the wintertime, but effectively the same rate. So I think that's very cool. As far as, just curious for my own curiosity, do, do you guys happen to know maybe a percentage of residents that have larger than three-quarter inch tap sizes?
It was very, it would be small, small. I don't even know if you'd count it in a percentage.
Okay.
Percentage number would be so small.
Okay.
Count on your, on your digits.
One other thing, I suppose I might ask while we're here, and some of the roundtable members are here. I know you guys haven't had a chance to meet. You know, kind of since the proposed numbers have come out, and I'm just kind of curious from the roundtable standpoint, now that the numbers are here. Do we still, is it still universally recommended that option one would be your choice there?
It provides the best revenues to vote, yeah, because it's literally almost fifty-fifty between the fixed rate charge and the volume charge, and revenue stability was like right up there.
Right.
It was one of our top priorities.
Yeah, well, that's extremely important, obviously, as, as we go into all these construction projects, so, yeah. No, I think this is great, and really I want to thank the roundtable members for all, everything you guys have done, and Todd certainly, all the work that you've put in, so.
Probably had a voting diverse in our community. I'm still, like, the unanimous thing has me, seriously, because you had probably the most diverse group of residents in our town involved in those meetings, and you still hit a unanimous decision, which I think is
The best group to have.
Wonderful. It is. It honestly is. Well, and it just reaffirms what they set out and their choices and decisions. It's for our community.
So it's had a couple of questions, you already, you already answered most of them, which was fantastic. I know in a separate part of the presentation, and maybe we can, I don't know where we pulled this into. You did have that breakdown of the base rate, like, there's a portion of that that was like the capital charge, it was like the service charge. I really appreciated that. Can we look at actually having that potentially broken out in bills?
Yes. Okay, we need to do that.
Great.
Yeah, no, definitely. And that, that's something that I, I had asked, like, leaned over at one point during a roundtable session to check the territory to to kind of confirm that Cassell is capable of spitting out this differentiate, the differentiation on those.
Okay.
Because I agree, I think it's, we need, as a whole, I think on our bills, there needs to be greater differentiation, identifying volumes and all of that. And that'll be another project unto itself, home time in your spare time.
So, you know, your hour. So I will say, if we can do, and I know you've got other things that just focus. I would say if we can maybe put like on the website, just say, here's the breakdown of the base rate to start with. And if it takes us an extra two months or three months to get it on the bills, whatever.
Probably from January one, we have to change the layer fills for anyways, because I don't like how the water usage is with the base charge, right? It's going to keep seeing, and
Okay.
You know, people don't really look at their bills until they have a problem.
Right.
And so if they can read it and understand it.
Okay.
It'll be easier for residents.
And that was a thought too, and then that helped a lot when I initially looked at the base rate. Well, residential's so much higher, but then when you realize that includes three thousand gallons of water, then, by the way, you're only paying eight dollars fifty-something cents. Great deal. Then you're like, oh, okay, now I understand that everyone has the twenty-four to seven, and then residential's got the three thousand gallons. So, um, so if we can just make sure that's broken out somewhere, and then if we could also just put together, and maybe that's what vegan has in their hand, some sample bills that we can put on, so we can show here's an example of the high user, here's an example of that average user, here's an example of that low user.
Is that for, can I ask you for some clarity on that? Are you talking about for, for our next time we come to talk with you, or are we talking about? Are you talking about final engagement and outreach after adoption of rates?
Somewhere in that period. Basically, I know in the past, we've had like, hey, if you want to know about water rates, go to this page on the town website. If we could just somewhere in there have some sample bills on that, so people could see.
What we can do is I can do a calculation of zero, four, or five, whatever the tier is.
Okay.
Do a mid-tier, uh, large tier base bill and have it up there.
That does, that'd be
And it'll just be the calculations, it won't be an actual bill, but that will get
Perfect. So we can ensure that. And then I just wanted to, I know we've said this, I just wanted to just clear. If people really do say, hey, I want to know what this is going to impact me, whether in my business, they can come to staff and staff can help them work out and look at If people really do say, hey, I want to know what this is going to impact me whether in my business, they can come to staff and staff can help them work out and look at their usage and say.
We have a little meter consumption report for the past year and give them what their monthly bills would look like during high usage.
The other question, and I just wanted to clarify, it sounds like it. So the debt service, the way we have it set up is we're factoring that that will be paid fully by tap fees.
That's that's the goal in terms of cash flows.
Okay. So when we're looking at the revenue needed from, I know in our budget that we approved, that includes the debt service. Is that then taken out of that and determining the revenue requirement for these rates?
I believe so. I I would just need to back.
Okay, if we could just double check, because I just want to make sure that we're not accounting for in tap fees and then also account for it in rates because. I know our budgeted amount was roughly in that five million or so.
Yeah, so just verifying. Yeah, so we've got a lot of that service things.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and that's listed out in the financial plan that's attached at the back of the packet. Debt service payment, yeah, existing for the water plant. And then it's the same for the wastewater. So it's proposed to be coming out of the capital expansion fund.
Okay.
In in the financial plan that was you that was developed.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to, it it sounded like that was the case. I just wanted to.
It's it's on a page twenty-six.
And then the other question, we chatted a little bit about this strength based system. With the, as you mentioned, lots of stuff's really old. If we were to take just like, okay, here's what you do for a restaurant versus a hotel and that's me. Would that mean that we would potentially end up with a? Meaning that numbers to be higher today or potentially it would be too high. So if we were to say, okay, we're going to take these numbers from the eighties. And say, okay, we're just going to apply that for now until we figure something else out. Would we be charging people too much? Or would we actually be undercharging because there's new chemicals and more strength in the system?
I would say all of us being equal, the concentrations would have gone up because water usage has gone down. But you're right, there's so many other process changes that could have made in the restaurant. But usually you would influence those those concentrations on those different categories. With the thought that, you know, if you're billed under that category, you have the burden to prove. You have to show up and say, no, this is not, this is incorrect. I should be charged a three hundred milligrams per liter basis or something like that. So. And that's a lot of communities do and rarely do they get challenged. It's kind of amazing how much those those old published reports are used. And not challenged. But again, some communities like in California do monitor, I think they do monitor, not exactly the strength for a Taco Bell. So that's some.
So is it typical that when you see communities that implement that, that they're also monitoring it or they kind of put it in and then they say, hey, if you want to get charged something else, you go monitor it and tell us?
I would say the the rate structure monitors it. They've got their other pre-treatment customers to look at.
Those are for large communities with a lot of commercial use. Start looking at that. So it's not even something that we, I mean, that'd be. It'd be wouldn't be cost effective, wouldn't really be wise for us to go down that route with where we're at as a community. In my opinion, I'm correct if I'm wrong.
How do you classify two? I'm not sure. You that's my secret. I mean, I I don't know how many utilities, you know, have you guys made a restaurant? Is Taco Bell a restaurant? Does it sit down? Yeah, so there's a lot of questions, but it's done. It's done.
It would take its own rate study or its own study within the town, basically.
Yeah, there was. Yeah, it would take some.
A lot of sampling, want to test it.
Yeah, so we take the sampling and testing if we were going to use an existing numbers that were already out there or.
If we wanted to verify.
Not well, so the now the question I'm having is. If we were to use these older numbers at some points of that study that everyone's using apparently or not, a lot of people are using. If we were to say, okay, we're going to use these numbers from back in the eighties, would we potentially be overcharging people or undercharging? And if the answer is we would be overcharging, then I'd agree, we definitely need to go and do a further study. If it's like we likely because of changes in chemicals, we would probably be undercharging. I'm not as concerned. We can still go do a study if we really want to spend the time and energy in that, but it allows us to at least. Pull back some of that that we know is potentially out there.
Well, there's data wranglers too that businesses can. Lease and stuff like that, that'll actually track all of that. So if it does get challenged, there is ways they can bring it back and say.
I've got a question. Is this is this, I mean, really important for what we're talking about? I mean, it was one of their suggestions, something that we should look at. I think it's important to this. I mean, we can decide not to do it, but yeah, it was in the report as something we could consider doing. So I think does the town have the capability to do that currently?
I mean. Responsibly. I I have a ten, I was gonna say Patty's gonna say I overpromised. I know, I mean, I don't want to back myself into a corner. The 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 reality is that it is that it's October. So the. What I would foresee as being the deputy director of the utilities would be that. This is something that I would like to investigate further. I know that our superintendent at the wastewater treatment facility very much would like to investigate this further and learn how we could implement this. I think that we are all already proposing a pretty significant change, especially to our commercial customers. Alone with the with the structure changes. And I think that there would need to be. A a true. What are my hardest words? Collaborative community effort. Of a dedicated and true engagement to talk about what it would look like for our. Community and and the customers that we have. And I don't, it's October.
Everything we're saying is in context of next year.
Right, yeah. So I guess I'm like, January. That would be the part I I think that's resource staffing resource wise, I just don't see how we can pull it off. To be really.
Could it be something a project we set aside until the water treatment plants are up and running? Something like that. I mean, I'm trying to think of a timeline that would make sense when we don't have staff on site trying to. Do these other projects right now. I don't know.
Well, we are also, I mean, we laid the conversation, but we are looking at bringing back some code changes that are in this very arena of setting us up to. Have identified what requires pre-treatment, what our our parameters are that you cannot exceed as far as your wastewater discharge and some correction in the process of. Visiting that and hoping to bring that around to the board in the regard. It's supposed to be the end of this year, but yeah, already September. So I think it could be, I would love for it to be a goal that we set out that it's a project that we talk about. But that's me.
Sure. No, no, and that's for me, it's more. Right, what I appreciate about the rate that someone put together, right, is that you guys highlighted and roundtable have no one subsidizing anyone. And and that's we've got, it looks like we've got a good shot at that with water. Sewer, we brought that in line, right? Commercial was paying more than they should have before and we're shifting that back on to residential. This is something we've never considered, like what is the strength of what's being put in, right? What's being put in from? My house is probably not the same strength as what's coming out of a manufacturing facility, right? So it might, even if we're the same amount. That I'm not having chemicals and things going in there that we have to deal with the tree. And so that I think that regardless. Now, I agree if we're not like for Collins, where we can invest hundreds of thousands of dollars and hundreds of staff hours and going out and doing a study and coming up with all our own things. But if we can find out that, hey, these numbers that it sounds like are fairly commonly used would not be, we would not, if we can see that we would not be overcharging people. Right? We're not coming, in reality, I should be paying five extra dollars and you're charging me six, but if in reality you should be paying five extra dollars and I'm charging you three. At least we're recovering a portion of that. And then we can in ten years say, hey, we want to do our own study because we're big enough now and we've got enough commercial. But I really don't want it to be something where we say, well, let's just not mess with it. And then we continue to have a situation where even if it's a small amount, we're not really capturing all the burden that's being placed on the system by users. If there's a way that we can literally just say, these are common numbers used, we're going to use those same classifications here. That's pretty scut and dried and simple. But again, that's a decision we as board have to make. The policy decision is, are we going to pursue this?
But personally, I would say, why not make it a part of the twenty-two, twenty-three strategic goal, right?
And I'm not saying we have to do it this year. I just, well, I would agree, but I just say it needs to be done. If we say we're going to do it next year, that's fine, but it needs to actually get done, not.
I think it's worth.
Maybe sometime.
We definitely need to know because we're, I mean, yeah, we're playing to grow business, friend.
Right, we we need to.
For sure.
Go for it. I I want to highlight a few scenarios. Of course, I want to thank everybody and I really like how this was presented because this. Helped me with my understanding a lot better, but there's a few scenarios I want to highlight that we're essentially lowering bills on the residential level. So the first one we talked about was multifamily. That's given bills will go down for multifamily water users. People who use less water will obviously have an opportunity for significant savings now through if this were what we were adopting. So that's the obvious one. The third one we didn't mention, which is the significant number of our households, is all of those that use non-pot systems for irrigation. Because they won't see those increased values. At the extent of everybody else would because they won't have those peak irrigation in the summer. So ideally, so if my, I would, I would be easy to assume that anybody that's in a neighborhood that has non-pot irrigation, their monthly bill will go down. Significantly, I would say, like a significant percentage. Because all of those higher months were based off of outdoor irrigation. With that said, too, I do want to make. That outdoor irrigation is such a major part of it. That's why it's been acknowledged several times in all the models as these are the peak seasons. This is when. Bills go up. This is when rate the water usage goes up is for outdoor irrigation, meaning that. If things inside your home are not changing on a monthly basis and how you're operating your home, you would have a consistent bill. Things like laundry, although I realize they do use a lot of water, are not the reason why we're seeing those giant bills. Those are outdoor irrigation. That's when we're increasing and doubling, tripling our water usage from one month versus another one. It's based on outdoor irrigation. So that's what we see in all the models and in the samples that we're seeing. For the average user, the lower user and the high user, they were seeing the peaks for those few months where they're significantly higher rates and that was for outdoor irrigation. That doesn't change what you normally do inside your house. So that's why we see a higher on those months and those months that are increasing more significantly. You know, those aren't going to see the same effects outside of those using outdoor irrigation. So I want to make that really clear. For people doing the same operations within their homes, they wouldn't see that fluctuation based on seasonality. Right? So I just, I want to make that clear because I think that's a concern because I see people see some rates are higher, but again, that's based on outdoor irrigation. And so this, I think, accomplishes a lot of things that we've been talking about and hearing from the community saying, I want to control my bill. And I have an opportunity to use less water by improving something outdoors generally for irrigation. That's the the highest potential for savings. So I think it accomplishes what we're trying to do and I appreciate those goals that are brought forth by that that our group because obviously that's that's how they're trying to solve for it. So. That's one thing for residential. So I'm liking those options. We we need to, and I want to encourage this board to provide the direction to do more for commercial. We need to look into models similar to other communities around this. We cannot be the only one that does a blanket. The only community in the area that offers just blanket tier system, not in consideration of tap sizes or uses or anything like that. We need to do the due diligence to make sure that we're competitive, but by still recovering our costs and being responsible. So I want to encourage us and I know there's we have not enough time to get it done and I completely understand because there's so much going on. But I would love for this board to provide direction to say, let's take it further. Let's let's break down the commercial uses more so that we offer the appropriate tier rates, the appropriate business uses. And then that way we can say, and I can stand up here and say. Businesses run our town. People who live here, work here, people who live here own businesses here, people who work here and have businesses feed our families. So this is a part of our community. We need to do our due diligence to say. We did everything possible and wanted to be competitive, but still responsible to our community. We make sure that we're charging the right amount. And if they come back later and say. You guys didn't do that, I would feel guilty and I would say that we didn't do what we needed to do to protect our businesses. So. That is the thing that I want to challenge it to say, I understand. We have to increase and do significantly more, almost a hundred percent more money. We have revenue. For the commercial factors to make sure that they're covering their costs. But how within that total cost can we break it down to make it as fair as possible, as competitive possible to other?
Talking in the future.
Yeah, I think I would, we need to do it before we roll out rates. I don't want to roll out rates and say. We're rolling up this rate to make it look like residential, knowing that it's different than any other commercial rates in the region. And then knowing that it's not not likely the fairest option that we could have done more.
I'm sorry, I just need clarification. So is that inaccurate? Because I I'm from what it was asked earlier, the understanding was is the overall meter for commercial. Is typically what's measured and not so much the the volume usage. So that was kind of my understanding when that question was asked earlier for the commercial is. How we set it up and structure. You said there's a few places, Arizona, California, that set it up according to business, correct? Type of usage and stuff like that.
That was wastewater.
Okay, so water is different.
Water might be on meter size.
Okay, so water is on meter size.
For Collins is a perfect example, they based their rate structure, the tiered rate structure. Tier threshold is very based on meter size.
And ours is, I mean, our our base rate is based off of. The the tap size.
Yeah, yeah, just based on.
Basically, traditionally, the bigger the tap size, the bigger the user.
The more the cost.
So it is pretty equitable. I mean, the way we've done it.
Well, for the meter size, yeah.
For the base rate.
To to base a tier structure based on major size. If if everything's in size accordingly and whatnot and everybody in all restaurants, three quarter inch meters, all Starbucks for one inch meters. You could say there's a relationship between the customers that are one inch meter and they all certainly have the same demand patterns. You could design a rate structure for one meter. The tier, the tier threshold is different for one meter than you would for three quarter inch meter, but many times. There's still a lot of diversity of demand. When when you get to larger meters, there's a greater diversity of demand. So a three quarter inch meter, if you have a bunch of three quarter inch meters, price similar demand. So, yeah, you probably could have a tier structure when you get to the larger meter sizes. Some of them need a two inch meter just to be instantaneous peak demanding irrigation, I guess, a perfect example that that. That you need a larger meter not because you use a lot of water, but just because the peak demand. So. But you know, something that can be evaluated is looking at all the commercial customers and their meter size and looking what the.
When you say it's something that can be evaluated, I mean, how fast?
We we can. We could probably turn around fairly quickly. We just take probably.
Are we risking seeing a bunch of businesses that have very high consumption on the commercial side, seeing a massive increase in their bill?
We saw fourteen hundred dollars on a monthly basis.
So it's going to possibly be more. If we do, it is going to be more. So their cost is going to go through the roof.
There is the the highest commercial users. Could realistically, I just don't want your numbers out.
I don't.
The businesses are aware, right, of this potential rate increase?
They're they're aware that this conversation is happening.
Have they reached out to the town at all to to see what it's going to look like?
I've had several.
Have they like reached out to you guys at all though to see what that might look like after history of billing?
Not yet.
Not yet, but.
No, and I.
Let's let's think.
Yes, and and we were and we didn't until, we did not want to get ahead of the game and talk to them about what those potential rates could look like and tell them they came before the Board of Trustees. So we are, we we are willing and happy to meet with these customers, but just wanted to wait until, right?
I think as a board, you guys, I mean.
My concern doing. My concern doing that is in waiting and holding off for possible grievances, say for a month, two months. No, because then we're moving forward, accepting that residents, we now know residents are covering a large part of this. And if we put it off, then we are saying we are okay with residents continuing to.
We wouldn't be putting this off. What I'm asking is, can we get a study done or figure out commercial wise? So we can try to do this, so that's the way possible, John, I mean, trustee Gator. So I had two questions. One, would this fall under the scope of our current contract that we already have with Rapp House, or are we gonna do a change? And what's the cost of that gonna be? And two, with staff already being stretched across all the different projects. What are we looking at in staff ability to engage on this? I, I just don't, I don't know the answers to either of those questions.
So there's a question, what's the time to take to look at some of these other rate structure alternatives?
You for commercial.
Have a lot of the infrastructure in place, and you have a lot of billing data in place. It's, um, just a matter of some conversations and doing some analysis coming, you know, kind of whittling it down. I, I don't see it more than taking a few days. Of course, I'm always optimistic. The actual calculation time, that doesn't last long in terms of getting your troops together and, and coming to conclusions, yeah, it affects everything. That's, that's what takes the most time.
So are we looking at an increase in our contract that we have, or is this just part of what we already have paid for?
I, I would, I would venture to say, yeah, yes.
So I guess the question is, if a few more days of considering alternate options that would make us more fair and protect our businesses, is that worth it to us?
Absolutely.
I think so. I think that's a very easy.
And we'll make the staff time. Well, we'll make it work. I think, you know, we have waited since I've been, since I started. I'm like, where's our water rate study? And where, where's, and now we're finally, we've got a really great study. Let's finish it up. We're so close. Now let's do it. So close. So we'll make the time, we'll figure out, you know, we'll get an amended. Stop.
But I mean, the other, and then the irrigation, just acknowledge that, I mean, we're talking about three times as much. Money coming from irrigation customers, which I understand, it's coming from people, you're paying for what you're getting, and you're doing your fair part. And that's where the money needs to come from. I just wanna acknowledge, though, that that doesn't make it easy for change for people, for our customers. So even though if we're saying, hey, well, it's fair, that's how you have much you have to pay, it's still gonna be hard. And so I just, I, I want everyone to know that as we're making these, and as we're considering these, and as we're adopting them, none of these decisions are easy. We don't want anybody to have to pay more. We definitely don't want that. But that's the last thing that we won't have to do to anybody. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're siding on the residents. I agree with that fullheartedly, that's the majority of our customers. But we just have to be sympathetic, of course, to all of our customers, and make sure that we, they know that we're just trying to do what's fair. And acknowledge that it might be hard transition, and just have that sympathy for them, because it hurts me or think that that could be hard for people. And businesses and whoever having this irrigation.
And we have the funding available for that increase?
What was the question?
Do we have the funding available for the study?
For the couple more.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out. You know, we can look at. Phasing in of some of this as well. I mean, it's, I was just asking Megan about it, and they were, they said it's, it's really complicated. But it is something we can look at and bring back when we talk about the, the commercial rates. We, we, we know that this, I mean, especially for our irrigation customers, this is, this is huge, devastating, massive. And if we can give them a way to ease into it a little bit, then, you know, and us still be able to continue to recover our costs, then we'll, we'll present that as well.
And so I do what, I, I am sympathetic towards people, but I do also wanna remind the board that. The prior board hit the residents with a hundred percent increase in the middle of pandemic. And they lived with that from twenty twenty till now. So businesses did get brought closer to speed last year. But it was the residents who got hit in the middle of something none of us has seen in our lifetime, so wanna be cognizant of that, but also understanding. It's not like we're doing something that other people haven't gone through. The residents aren't getting hit with it now, because they went through it. Literally in the worst year in my lifetime. So the residents have already gotten hit in the head repeatedly on this. So it's, it, it eventually had to come around to everybody. It's just the other people have gotten two years less of getting hit in the head than the residents did. All right, who's thinking further?
So we will get some more information on the commercial, look at, uh, maybe phasing in some of it. I mean, again. All board decisions, but wanna be able to provide you guys enough options. And I, I know the previous board is the decision that were made, that happened, I think, my very first meeting. What's happening? But we, we know that that happened, lessons were learned, and let's see how we can improve our processes and getting information out, helping to get. People up to speed. So that's my hope as your administrator, to try to help guide that.
I have one, one question. In the phased approach, we're not talking about phasing their rates up slowly, correct? Is that what you guys are, are suggesting or looking at is changing the irrigation rate over a period of time?
That is an option.
I just wanna make sure that we, as a board, are not utilizing the residents' high payments still to. Ease them into it. That would be, got it.
Complicated in order to make sure that we do continue, that we continue to receive the payments and, and stay on track. Not using the resources of the residents to, to subsidize. That's not gonna happen.
Just wanted to make sure, when we were talking about, because this is recorded, so I just didn't want residents coming back later saying, does that mean we're gonna continue to pay?
We can't do that.
I felt super confident that this entire board stands very clearly, that everybody needs to pay their own way. We're not relying on one group to pay for another. I think, I think we've made that really clear. And just, just as I wanna throw this out there, because it's really easy to bag on an old board, but, um. At the time when we had to, um, change our rates, it was really, the stability of the payment was the most important thing that we had to do it in an emergency situation. It, man, it sucked, and I hate it every moment where we had to raise any kind of rates. But I guarantee you, that's exactly why we asked for a study immediately, and that's why we're progressing to this point, so we can do better, know better, and go further. So I hate to say, well, shame on them for doing that. Now, that's, that's been a progression to get where we are, to make the, a better decision. And there'll be a better decision in five years from now, too. So I don't want that person to say, oh, you guys are junk. So I just wanna be really clear that the best intentions have always been that to make sure that people, we are taking care of them, provide a reliable.
I was on, I was on that board, and I was the one who bought for us spending more time to try and help the residents out, and we so forward. We are ready to move forward. One last question, this one's simple. When are we looking to roll these out? Looking beginning of twenty three, first of the years, planning to roll out new rates, but we approve it in like November, December.
It has to be.
Start as of January. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, they, they have to be approved, um, in conjunction with the budget. We're supposed to have a budget presentation next week, so now I'm starting to think about how we make this all. Absolutely.
All right, on the board discretionary and outreach funds.
Okay, this is not new information for any of you, hopefully, but it, and it has come back a couple different times, but now we're to budget. And we really, staff needs some direction on how you want to move forward with both of these funds. As of now, um, out of the board discretionary fund, forty four, little over forty four thousand dollars has been spent, which is essentially the fireworks. And out of the outreach fund, eighty seven thousand has been spent, which is, um, I think, Main Streets. So far, and then we just paid out, um, the Boys and Girls Club twenty five thousand that we committed to. Nobody has come and asked me about wanting to be funded next year. I've not heard from Boys and Girls Club that they. They want any more money next year or anything like that. We know that there's a discussion regarding Main Streets happening at the next meeting. So I, I just, we need some direction from you all. Of course, you know, we'd love to save some money in the general fund, and this is general fund money. But I understand the need of the board to have a fund to, um, take care of special projects that might come up. You know, things like that. So. Ready to answer any questions that you might have? I'd love for you guys to just kind of deliberate and talk about. How you would like to move forward.
Uh, I think it'd be great to have both funds as one fund, and. That would be my personal opinion. I, um, also think that, um, I don't think it's a bad idea to fund nonprofits. Um, but we would need to have a cap, and we definitely need to submit applications, in my opinion, for that. Anyone else can go ahead and speak?
My opinion on this is pretty straightforward. I say we just. Remove the discretionary fund overall, dedicate that money to fireworks, because presumably that's not going away.
Right, well, we, we're gonna set up a separate line item just for fireworks.
Sure, but I would say that, that part of, of this, right. So move that money out, and then, yeah, I would say basically the same thing the mayor says. You know, whatever, whatever money is left in that, combine them into one fund, and, you know, if, if the board wants to take another. Twenty K off that top and stuff it back into the general fund, if you find with that.
Okay. I kinda agree with you. I think we need to cut it down to the very bare bones minimum. You know, we're expecting everybody else to be cutting back right now. We need to do the same thing here. I know we got our basics fireworks, we definitely can't cut that. But maybe meals that we're having here, you know, some of the different things, we don't need that much money, I don't think, in the discretionary fund. Let's cut her back very minimum, and then go from there.
Me?
Sure.
Okay, um, so in listening to our last meeting, I know that trustee Gator spoke. That our budget is extremely, like, tight this next year. I would like to see a percentage of the funds that were allocated. I know there's a difference in the outreach fund and discretionary fund. Both are utilized completely differently, to my understanding. So I think merging those, did that merge the usage?
Doesn't matter.
How they are used.
It's just how this Board of Trustees has used the funds. So normally, in, in most municipalities, what I've seen is just one fund. So this one has been used for two, um, two different purposes, but really combining them into one is not going to change how that money can be used.
Got it. So I would like to say, again, hearing trustee Gator's concern about finances. And your concern about finances, I don't mind merging the said funds. I would like to say maybe set it around a twenty thousand dollar mark for emerging anything. I don't know if we're setting that. I don't know if worrying about applications. For any kind of, like, an outreach program would be necessary. How much money have we actually used for meals, emergency planning, stuff like that? Things that come at us last minute as.
Five hundred dollars. I, I, it's, it's not much. It is not much. I mean, because if, when we serve you meals, it's Subway.
Got it.
And it's like eighty bucks.
Okay.
Or it's Pizza Hut, or the Pizza Place, you know, and it's, you know, eighty dollars. So it's, the meals are not expensive. I know we paid for, um, uh, the crowd training for the CDC, Adam, I think the discretionary fund. So I mean, but it's just, it's been minor little.
Okay, so I would love to see, so since we are going to see this increases for some people as far as the water rates and stuff like that go. I would love to see some of this funding go into the hub grants. If, if that's something that you guys support, I think that. Right, so, and if that is something where we can benefit families that might see those increases that they can't control. We're not limited, so if someone, say, even if a business is experiencing, they are allowed to apply for hub grants as well, correct? Is it only limited to residents?
I'm pretty sure it was just residential.
Okay, is there a reason we have it set as only residential, since we have so many small, small businesses here in town? Is there a reason why we could not?
There's not a reason why we couldn't, but the reason why we did it was because, as trustee Gator explained, we. We hit the residents really hard, and this is our olive branch, then, like, we got extra air, urban, urban money or whatever. It was our way to responsibly try and help them after we just, you know, whacked them on the stick.
Right, but now that we're looking at leveling out that balance, is there not a reason we could not look at it? When we start leveling it back out, is that?
We can take a look at it. We had made, you, you let us take a look at that, because we could determine what that average two month period of bills would be. And, and that, so it was like that three hundred dollar mark. I don't know what that is for businesses, and it's just, it'd be different, so.
I mean, it's collectively, though, I mean.
It's just an idea.
We're all kind of in agreement, so. One fund.
Figure out the hub grant thing later.
Yep, definitely.
Um, so I, I have no problem getting it into one fund. Um, kind of my stance on it is this. Um, our staff has gone back and back and back, cutting out everything they could out of the budget, including things that they need. This is the one area, obviously, we moved the fireworks out, we keep that. This is the one area, these are the projects that we put together, they're great ideas, it's not their bad things to do. My concern is, we're in a tough spot financially. Um, we're, our country's in a recession. Right now, with revenue and CIPs, which again, going through the CIPs and the general fund, these are the bare bones minimum gotta happen this year. Maybe, maybe we can push a, a study, but that's like thirty, forty thousand dollars. We're spending a hundred seventy five thousand dollars out of fund balance in our general fund. So basically, revenue we bring in, we're spending a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. In addition to that, when you look at all the CIPs of general fund. A hundred and sixty nine thousand is our two funds. That's a hundred and sixty nine thousand of it. Now, obviously, we take out the fifty to sixty thousand of. The fireworks, and that's still gonna be theirs, it's gonna be elsewhere. That's a hundred thousand dollars of that. That we're not cutting staff hours, we're not cutting staff jobs, we're not cutting the plant, we're not taking Bob's truck away. We're not taking away studies. It is, we have the ability to just say, we're gonna also pull back on ours. And so for me, I would say, we can look at how we wanna run that in the future, but we're in a recession, it's not a good time for the government to start spending more money.
Five thousand safe?
My preference is zero, but if we're like five to ten thousand, okay, that's, we're, we're significantly, but I don't wanna pigeonhole us, sure.
Right.
But if we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna go from, you know, we're gonna go down to a hundred thousand, we're still, that's, that's a lot. And that hundred thousand is both of the studies that staff wants to do in twenty three. Add up to, I think, seventy thousand dollars, I mean, sixty five thousand dollars, the two studies, no, sorry.
I think it is important to get as much money out of there as possible, especially considering what the, the, you know, proposal is gonna be coming next week for. Main Streets, you know, so there's gonna be, we'll, we'll talk about that proposal at that time. But in the meantime, in preparation for that, we should remove as much money from these as possible, especially if that specific use isn't gonna be used for outreach anymore. So I think that twenty thousand dollars is an amount that I would agree with, considering fireworks are elsewhere. And then I would, would love for us to continue our outreach and continue our support of the community. By offering a process, of course, to apply for a grant for nonprofits in our community. Five thousand dollars a pop for three different organizations in our community, because that is an investment. And during a recession, these nonprofits are the ones we're helping.
Right, they're gonna be more important to kids.
These are the ones, these are the nonprofits that are going to be, that we will be investing in to make sure that they can turn around and take care of our, our community. So I would love to see three five thousand dollar grants for nonprofits. Um, a five thousand dollar, just enough stake for meals, whatever, it does have to happen, that comes up that we are at least counting for something.
So you are agreeing in bringing the funds together.
Yeah.
And reducing the cost.
It should all just be discretionary.
Right, so we're all, we're all in agreement. Yeah, okay, had you given up to go off of, to come up with some options?
You bet. So what I'm hearing and, and what I think makes a lot of sense, I, I appreciate you, trustee Gator, trying, like, let's get rid of it, let's slash it. You bet. So what I'm hearing and, and what I think makes a lot of sense, I, I appreciate you trustee Gator trying, like, let's get rid of it, let's slash it. But I think twenty thousand dollars makes a lot of sense. That number is, is a, is a good number, just in whether it is used for. One organization that needs five hundred dollars and another organization that needs two thousand dollars and, and that's it. But at least it gives you some cushion, um, like the Boy Scout, um, piece out front. I mean, that would have been a great opportunity for the Board of Trustees to say, you know what, let's, let's pitch five hundred dollars into this project. So this would be, that, this pot of money would allow for that. I'm also hearing that maybe we want to add a little bit more, more money to the hug grant. And I can look into, I'll, I'll talk to charity and see what that looks like, um, and we can, you know, that'll be included in the budget. The idea of bringing in commercial into those hug grants, um, Sherry and I will talk about and bring you some ideas or recommendations. Okay. So yes, I do have enough. Thank you so much. I wanted to make sure I heard everything right.
Question from board. Strategic plan, goal setting, can wait.
So this, so, let me tell you something real quick. Was supposed to be the goal setting. It was gonna be a night with boards and dots and all kinds of things. And of course, nothing ever goes as planned. And we just, we just kind of work with what we have. But I didn't want this, I didn't want an opportunity to go by without letting you know that this is still on our radar. I think goal setting is very important for the trustees. I don't think we need to do it tonight. Um, I want you guys, I, I, I sent out the information, gave you some ideas, and if, when I meet with you guys one on one, or you see me. You want to stop by the town hall or something, tell me some of your ideas, and that way we can kind of talk about it and see how it fits into the strategic plan and into the budget. And we will get, come up with something before the first of the year. So, and my hope is, we have both sitting by the trustees. We work on those tasks that go underneath those goals, and we report back to you, and then we do those quarterly updates. So that is my hope.
We appreciate your flexibility.
It is what we do. I think we all do that in our own jobs. We have to be very flexible. So this, we just continue on making things.
So we can agree to come back to the goal setting when we actually dedicate a night to it and really focus on. Uh, yeah, I, I do like the idea of being able to like have the charts and stuff. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, I, I mean, I had my stuff written down, but a lot of my focus was on, so I think we better just separate it out, so.
For my one ask, before we approve a budget, I would really like to still look into the, um. The Invisio.
I know.
Honestly, so it, it, it truly lines up with so many of our strategic goals in general. Transparency, community engagement, like this targets such a large part of that. I get it, it's ten thousand annually, seventy five hundred one time charge for implementation and training. But this is one of the most useful tools, I think, in exploring any town website that I have seen. It answers every question that we get on a regular basis. So that's one thing I would say.
Can we put this on one of our next budget discussions? Can staff figure out? Cause there's a few things, obviously there's the cost, but then there's how much time is gonna be taken to administrate that, and what's that gonna look like? So if you can maybe bring it back to our next budget discussion, then we can talk about whether we wanna. Cause data, data entry is gonna be the. But we can discuss it at the budget workshop.
Have to input the data no matter what, because we're gonna have to update quarterly, no matter what. So we'll figure it out, but well, yeah. I'll, I'll give it to charity and we can see where we could put, take money out of if we, if we would so choose to do so. How does that sound? And I'll let you know what that time, time component looks like. I have not spent a lot of time investigating it, other than I spent a half an hour on the phone with one of them. They talked to me throughout, but I didn't want to spend too much time on it.
I like the idea, I agree with trustee T. I think it helps a lot with like transparency and hopefully we'll see what's going on. Again, I come back to my same concern for wanting to cut the discretionary fund, those that, is this something we can do without? Which is the question I kept asking Bob over and over again, you know, without it, can you, and if it's something we can do without. Again, I know it's like ten thousand dollars or it seems like. We're now like, can you use this? I don't know what the next year is gonna hold, and it's, I, I wanna make sure that we're not overextending ourselves. And then if things get really, cause I mean, if things get really bad, it's.
Yep.
It's gonna get really bad. Yeah, and I wanna make sure that we're as tight as we possibly can be before we get there.
Absolutely. I will, I will come up with some numbers for you. And I know Kelly and I both did that update. By hand or Windsor back in the day, so I think we can probably come together and come up with what it used to take us to do. So we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll let you know. Not a huge target, it would be nice to have, but we'll see. I appreciate that, trustee Gator.